All right, good evening. It is Tuesday, October 12th, 2021. We are meeting at the Provo City School District Board of Education. It is currently 5:27 PM and we're meeting at 280 West, 940 North in Provo, Utah. We'll begin with a roll call. I'm Melanie Hall, Board President.
Rebecca Nelson, Board Vice President.
Jennifer Partridge, Board Member.
Kay Jensen, Board Member.
Gina Hales, Board Member.
Terry McCabe, Board Member.
Eric Anderson, Business Administrator.
Keith Joel, Superintendent.
All right, their motion to convene.
A moving convene.
Correction? All right, we're going to turn the time over to Mark Mueller about a construction update.
Thank you. Hi, everybody. As always, if you have questions, stop me and ask whatever you'd like to know. Bonnie, do you mind pulling up that file? Most of this, you guys, is about the Timpview project, just to give you a few little updates on what's happening there.
That looks really nice at Timpview.
That's awesome.
That's pretty great.
It's a great water feature. We did that first.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It has been.
Yeah.
Is that going to be the new mural?
Sure is pretty.
Yeah, yeah.
It's looking for the license. Either the filter or something.
Can I try another way?
One thing, we're waiting for this file, just so you know, in all the transition areas where we've completed demolition in pieces, if you hear anything, we did have some water damage on one of the dance room floors up on that upper level from last night's storm. Because of the way we've had to transition and take pieces, this water continues to find its way, no matter how well we think we've sealed it. And so if you hear anything, there was some damage to the dance floor and we're going to work on how we can take care of that as soon as possible. Okay. Thank you, Bonnie. Can you slide down to that first photo? So this is, so what you're looking at here is the east parking lot, right? Here's the LDS Seminary Building. Here's our shops through this area, Thunderdome, right here. The reason I've highlighted this area, this is an area that we have to keep open and clear 24 hours a day for several reasons. One is for the construction traffic that continually comes off Quell and through this area and down into this other area, which I'll show you in a minute, on what's happening there. The other reason is emergency access. We have to keep a clear lane at all times for emergency access along that east side, especially for events. I stopped, I stopped up at the, there were several events happening this past Thursday night at Timpview, and I stopped there to take a look and see what was happening with parking and several things. And this, this gate, right here, it had been locked. And so we can't lock that, especially when events are happening. And so we've met since, we've met two or three times since Friday trying to work out the best situation. One of the things we're trying to do for events, especially as we get into winter, is to be able to use these ADA parking stalls to give people an opportunity to enter this Upper East Side as needed at the Thunderdome for various events and the restrooms there. And so that's another reason we've got to keep this, this space clear. Our, our construction team is going to relocate some of these items. I spoke with, with Clay, with CTE, they're going to relocate some things along here just so we can keep that open. Okay. Go to the next slide, Bonnie. Couple of reasons why I'm showing you this. First of all, you can see all the parking along Timpview Drive, right? And the west side faculty parking lot. You can see since the city helped us, however, how much better Quell is. It's been a much better situation since the city agreed to help us with parking restrictions Monday through Friday, I think at 7:00 AM to 4:30 PM. This area right here on the west side of the auditorium, this will be an additional small parking lot that'll be available within two to three weeks. It'll help with about 30 to 35 cars. And I'm, I'm working with Timpview Administration to see whether that's additional faculty or how we want to use that. It's for sure for, for visitors for events.
Mark, if I might add, having spent some time recently at Edgemont, lots of utilization of that parking lot as well as I think your faculty.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, there, there is some, some use there happening as well, and thanks for saying that, Keith. When I was up there Thursday night, there were three different events happening at the Timpview campus. There were a lot, there was a lot of traffic. And I thought it was interesting, over at Edgemont, there were 77 open parking stalls. And I know it's, I know it's a walk, right? Because you have to come up here, you have to cross this crosswalk and then follow sidewalks wherever you go, but at least it's a safe place to park. And so we continually invite whatever we can do to take some pressure off various areas for events. And Edgemont parking lot is one of those, one of those advantages. Any questions about this before I go to the next slide? Okay. Bonnie? Okay. You can see another view of Quell Drive, how empty that is. The neighbors appreciate the help with that situation. We've had, we've had a request in the past week from a couple of parents to create a crosswalk here by the LDS Seminary Building on Quell with flashing lights. The reason we can't do that, we're trying to keep students away from that location because this is a major entrance for construction traffic right here. And the traffic is going to increase significantly over the next 30 to 60 days because of everything happening here where this academic wing will be. So in case you hear requests like that, it's difficult for us to do something like that because we're just adding to some safety concerns.
Well, I, I can have you down the bunch of safe routes. They would never put one there anyway because of the speed of people coming down that area.
Correct.
Slightly.
It is, it's a tough corner, right?
So were kids parking in the, the street across? Is that what all those cars are? Is that why they want that crosswalk?
In these cul-de-sacs?
Yeah.
Yeah. And so the city helped us with signs there as well, Terry, to ask students not to park in those cul-de-sacs. Just, and what we're trying to do, we're trying to redirect everybody as much as possible over to that chapel parking lot and then walk up from 3400 North. There's a crosswalk there that the city added for us to get to the sidewalk by the tennis courts and then follow the sidewalks and the other routes to the school. I know it takes extra time, but it is the safest route for students. And, and again, just as a reminder, this is our bus lane, so this is the north entrance where the bus drop-off is. So kids can access the performing arts wing and then make their ways to whatever part of the building. They can also use this main west entrance, walking up from the tennis courts and 3400 North. And then there's also an entrance on the south academic wing. Those are our three main entrances and the safest way to access a building. But it does take some time, especially if they're headed to the industrial arts wing or to some of the PE space or to a release time in the LDS Seminary. It just takes some extra time. I mentioned this.
I mean, they have the extra time now with the new spell schedule, too, so.
Yeah, correct. Okay. Okay. Any questions on this before we go to the next one? Next slide, Bonnie. Okay, what you're looking at here, this is on that north side where this north academic wing is going to be. I just wanted to give you an idea what it looks like with these helical piers being installed. By the time we finish this, we'll have about 2,000 of these helical piers as part of this Timpview project to stabilize and work with also the expansive soils and that side of it. What you see here is a line where a footing will be, what's called a grade beam. And they've designed these piers, some at 45-degree angles, some straight vertical and some at 15-degree angles. And it all has to do with the structural equations to help us with shear value in case of movement with that building. And so if you walked up there today, what you would see is a rebar cage encasing this entire line. They'll pour concrete on this and these rebar hooks coming off these piers will all be embedded into that concrete beam. These piers that you see, some are as much as 56 feet deep, anywhere from 30 to 56 feet deep are how these piers have been designed and installed. And we have multiple consultants constantly watching this process, pier by pier by pier, to make sure that we're getting the right depths, destabilization, that the soils tests are where they should be, everything involved that way. And just another data point, so far about 100,000 pounds of steel rebar has been delivered to the project as of this week. So any questions on that? Okay, Bonnie. This, you are looking at a bird's eye view of the southeast side of campus, right? So here's the corner of the track and here's our ADA ramp leading to the football field and track, soccer field. Here's the Thunderdome right here. This is the 2011 weight room right here. This open space right here is where the old weight room used to be. And so the water I was talking to you about that got into the dance rooms today found its way through some of those roof transition points after we had done demolition. That's how it's finding its way in there. This open space, by next August, what you will see there are restrooms, which will be really helpful for events, boys' and girls' locker rooms, team rooms, and the athletic training room will be in this space. And we will have, we will have it ready to use by next August, especially the restrooms on the main level. And I'll show you a floor plan here in a minute. So this will be much better by the end of next summer, especially for next fall's events. It'll help on several cases.
So this, this next part that you're going to show is going to be, this will be completed by next summer?
Correct. Yep. And it'll be really, really close to when school's starting, by, by mid-August next year. Can you go to that next slide? So on the main level, right, so if you're walking from the Thunderdome, this is the Thunderdome right here, we've done a couple of things, the architects have. They've designed it so that students don't have to walk outside anymore from the Thunderdome over to the 2011 weight room. You can see here, everything will be enclosed and there'll be a hallway here. So kids will be walking back and forth through an enclosed structure now. It'll be a much better situation. This main level, as you can see, locker rooms, training room, locker rooms, restrooms, team This, this is the first, first level. On top of that, can you go to that next one, Bonnie? The second level of that structure, this will be the final plan. There'll be a robotics space, computer science, sewing, marketing, business labs, computer labs. That'll be on that second level. Those initially will not be used for those programs starting next August because we have to move existing classrooms from the lower level of the industrial arts wing on the east side to this space for about a school year while we renovate the first floor of the industrial arts wing into better special education space. And then once the new academic wing's done in summer of '23, then this will be the permanent home for those programs and the classes that are temporarily there will go to their home in the new academic wing. Any questions on any of that sequencing? Yes?
So earlier this summer, when you talked about this wing, all I remember hearing about was the CTE type thing. So was it originally going to be all CTE and now we're going to put some of those, what would have been on the first floor somewhere else, or was this always the plan and I just wasn't wearing?
No, so this was always the plan for that second level.
Okay, but for the first level, were there also going to be CTE there or is that?
No, no. There was, that was always going to be restrooms, team rooms, locker rooms, PE, yeah.
Except for the athletic trainer's classroom.
What's that?
The athletic trainer's classroom.
Yeah, can you go back to that slide before, Bonnie?
It's right next to the classroom.
Right here, Terry is the classroom. So it's adjoined to the training space so that he can go back and forth with his students.
Which will be CTE classes.
Correct, yeah, so that's correct. Thank you.
On this same slide, show me where like the students are coming in from a football game, where would they go through the restroom?
So, so the student, when they come in from, from the field, for example, they can come in these doors, they can come in these doors, right? And then they can make their ways into these locker rooms and into these locker rooms.
Okay, so they access the locker rooms for the restroom?
Correct. Yeah. Yeah. The teams.
These are teams only, so these would not?
So what other questions are there?
You see this section here? These are all the public?
Okay. I was, I was thinking more like spectators coming in.
Yeah, so spectators will also be able to enter this space through here and they'll be able to make their way through this corridor to these restrooms on that side. It'll be a much better setup than what they've had there for a long time. Any other questions about that space?
Is there an easier way for them to access the restroom? It seems you'd want them to have quick access where they're not in our whole school to get to the bathroom.
It's not very, this, I know it seems, it's not very far once you enter these lobby areas to get to those spaces. You'll be able to take this corridor, pass the Thunderdome, and then take a left to those. So you don't have to go through this. You can go here and then that way.
The left where it's right?
Yeah. Yeah.
That's great.
Any other questions about Timpview? Okay. That is it. Thank you for your time.
Any questions for Mark? Thank you, Mark. All right. Next, we're going to have a process about policy review by the superintendent Keith Rattel and Derek Anderson.
So with Derek coming on through to us, he, he's already been diving into the 6,000th Business and Operations Series. So that's the one we're going to start with. Derek will be going through a review on that and bringing proposed changes. I think we agreed to the February study session, right? So, and we've recently been given a series of possible new and revised policies from, I guess it's the Vervich Company, the one that USBA works through. So Derek has that and so that will be a guide for any of the specifically new and significantly revised policies that have to come up. So that's the series we'll be starting with this year. We talked it over with board leadership and most of the series that we do will have, we will invite a board member to be part of that review process. But this particular one, when you're dealing with finances, we really, we can't really deal with our own preferences on certain things. A lot of these have to really be tied to specific language that has been given to us. So Derek is going to lead a small team of his staff to review this and then he'll bring that to the board for your review and discussion and then ultimately for approval. So next year, we'll probably take on two policy series, probably the 1,000 and the 2,000 series, which, which I'll leave that process on because one of them has to do with the board and one of them has to do with administration. I will want to have at least one board member on each review team. So that's our goal. We want to review the policies. And we're now at the point where we have enough policies in place. They've been sitting there for a while, some of them, so it's time to review them and make sure that they're up to date. So we'll tackle one series or two series a year.
There's a lot of chances that the policy may not change, but we'll just approve it that we accept the same thing.
Right. We'll have to build updated on a given date. Yes.
Okay.
And so you're using the policy reference manual and the policy library just to?
Yeah, yeah, so that's, I'm going to look at kind of what we've got currently in place, kind of look and see what, what's in over in terms of best practices and see. I really like how the USBA has their layout because it kind of goes by a transaction cycle, kind of like what you're doing with HADA. And so it's kind of piecemealing where some of those spit narrows and, so maybe that is correct by comparing it to what we've done there.
Great. Any further questions on this?
Great idea.
Okay. CAPS update by Todd McKee, our Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Ed.
Yes, good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to provide you with an update about our CAPS program. We're very excited about this. Members of the board may recall that about four years ago, we started the process of investigating and then developing plans to implement. What we were very excited to see is an opportunity to provide a capstone experience for students in high school. It's an opportunity where students, juniors and seniors, hopefully are getting an authentic experience in combination with our business partners in the community. We are able to kick that off. We were a little slow doing so because of COVID, but we kicked that off this fall. Many of you were able to attend our grand opening over at the New Skin Building and we're just thrilled about the direction we're heading. Clay Bingham, our Director of CTE, has been leading this for us and he's here to provide more information about the kickoff and the direction. And I'm sure he's willing to answer any of your deep probing questions this evening. So I'll turn the time over to him.
Well, thanks, you guys. So Bonnie's got that for me, right, Bonnie? Hopefully. So there's, so thank you for those that came to our open house last month. It was a lot of fun. That was about a month ago, about today. And so we also have an open house that, I passed that around so you can see. So, so I'm Clay Bingham, the CTE Director, and CAPS stands for Center for Advanced Professional Studies. And also think of it as a capstone because that's what it is. So go, go ahead, Bonnie, go to the next slide. And I just, I want to show you how it fits within career and technical education. So we do lots of different things in CTE. And we also, they call them pathways. And there's different pathways for students to start and complete within the high school. And so I just kind of wanted to show you, we're doing a lot of good things in the CTE area and CAPS is going to be one of them and going to be able to continue on the great traditions that we've always had in the Provo School District. Some of the things that we do really well is we have one of the best internship programs in the state. We have 150 internships that are throughout the Valley, that we have a fantastic work-based learning coordinator in Jan Jardine that works very hard to place these students in different areas. We have great student organizations that compete and do well regionally and nationally. And so we've had great success in the past and we hope to continue that. And so now Provo CAPS. And so I'm going to introduce that to you. Some of you know this really well and others not as well, and so hopefully you get to know it a little bit better. So this is a video, it's a really quick one that I asked a CAPS student to put together just this week for me. It's about 45 seconds, so if you blink, you're going to miss it. So go ahead, Bonnie.
Melanie Hall, President of the School Board, and share a little bit from her.
So hopefully that looks really different than what our high schools and our different classes look like. And that's what we are going for CAPS, is we wanted it to be a different feel for the students. So go ahead and Bonnie, to the next slide. What CAPS really is, is it's reimagining what we want to do in education. And it's giving students a different opportunity to explore their career opportunities. And so we take students from Timpview High and we take them from Provo High. And I've talked with Jacob at Independence and we're working on getting a student there for next semester. And we bring them together in a CAPS center and we start to give them projects from real companies and people in our community that are providing them access to the things that they're studying, not only in CTE, but our other classes that we offer. And so we're giving them real authentic opportunities that we have never been able to do here in, in Provo School District. They're also discovering their passion. They're figuring out, is, is it what they want to do? Is it, do they want to be in marketing? Do they want to be in health science? And it gives them an opportunity to explore those and learn from different business, you know, different companies that offer those things. And then finally, it, it provides us community involvement. For the last three years, I've been talking with different businesses, different, you know, just whoever in the community, whether it's a nonprofit, whether it's for-profit, and getting involved, getting them involved in what we do here in Provo School District. So on the next slide, you'll see that these, these companies have either provided a project, they've been on our advisory committee, or they've provided mentors for us. And this is not all of them so far. And so we're just getting started and we're getting to see that people want to give back. They don't know how sometimes when I talk to them. They said, yeah, we've had interns and we have different ways, but we want to do more. And so all these companies have provided us some type of access just for CAPS in the last three years and especially in the last six months if we've really ramped it up. And the amazing thing is, is we've all done, we planned this, organized this, all during COVID times. And so I'm really grateful for all these people of giving their time. So go ahead and go to the, go to the next one. So there's our mission and goal. We really want to immerse people in a professional, our students, in a professional opportunity. We want to give them an upper, a chance to see what's out there that's beyond their classroom. The students are also being able to learn professional skills. So one of the things that we found is what employers are telling us is they don't have the professional skills to be able to do what they need to. So go ahead and go to the next one. So how it happened, three years ago, we started with a CAPS committee and we, you know, this is even before I got here. They went back and saw different CAPS communities back in the Midwest and they decided this is something we want to explore, investigate. When I joined on here, we had to kind of reinvigorate this, this committee. And so we had CT Director, we had board members, we had teachers, we had, I can't remember who else we had on there. We had, oh, admin jumped on. We had both principals on that committee. And then we had an advisory board where we had business partners from Microsoft and IHC and Rev Road and Hall Labs that helped us, guided us to where we needed to go. And now finally, we came to where we hired teachers this last spring. And we have two teachers from Provo and two teachers from Timpview that are a part of this. And then we also have mentors right now from different community, community partners. And then one of the key things that we did last spring is we hired a CTE Director, or not a CT Director, that's me, but we had the CAPS Director in Jan Jardine, who was already doing work-based learning. And Jan has done a fantastic job of helping find projects and get us the right teachers on board and, and working with getting students into the program. Go ahead, Bonnie. So this is the structure of it. So we hold it at New Skin. And New Skin has been a big, big support of this program. When we're looking at different spaces, I had conversations with Keith and we thought, hey, we might find a place, but then different obstacles came up. And then we looked at renting different spaces and the cost was, was quite high. And finally, New Skin came through for us and with help with one of our principals that had a connection there. We found that during COVID, they gave options of their employees whether they'd come back to their business or not. And so they found they had lots of open space and they provided us a space in the lowest level of their high-rise there. And so that's where New Skin has helped. And so one of the key things that both principals said, and I agree with this wholeheartedly, is we had to find a way to get students there that don't have access themselves, that maybe don't have a car, because on internships, we asked them to drive and be there on their own. But to be able to create a program like this, we wanted to make sure that all students had access. And so we, we found ways to be able to provide busing for students so any student can be able to participate. And it, it's been fantastic. It's worked out great. Students have enjoyed it. We have, even the teachers sometimes jump on and ride with them to it. We taught them professional skills. So we, we called it onboarding. So the first two weeks of the semester, we had them, we had, we brought professionals in to talk to them about different skills. We showed them how to get on LinkedIn and, and we showed them what, you know, a 30-minute elevator speech would be. We, we showed them it's appropriate to wear professional attire. And we had New Skin talk about what are their standards for their employees. So we started the students out with that. And these are all juniors and seniors.
By the way, Claire, I saw your LinkedIn post today. Good job.
Oh, thanks. Good, I'm glad somebody followed me. I think I got about four or five, so. And so then we have, and then, then students, we had a pitch day where different businesses came and they pitched their project ideas to the students and the students ranked which one they would like to do. And of course, they picked like fat cats came and presented to them and they thought, oh, I might get something free out of this, or bowling or something. So that was. or bowling or something. So that was number one, but we couldn't put everybody on that project. But we had them in groups of two or three, and I think there's a few with four. And we have students from Timpew and Provo that are working together. We have EL students that are working with AP students. And it's just fascinating to see the different groups come together, and they're working on these projects together. We have four teachers, like I said, two from Timpew and two from Provo. We also have mentors. Today, we had two students from UBU there that were helped mentoring from their engineering department that came and helped. One of them was good at coding, and so he was able to help our kids as they were working on an app. And then we've had, we brought in guest speakers. We had a guy from Whittaker Construction come in. We've had New Skin, the different departments come in and talk to them. And so they get access to guest speakers and different people in the business community. Go ahead, Bonnie. So these are the four strands that we follow. We have business and marketing. You have your health and science, your engineering, and then your digital design and software development. So these are the four strands, and we're finding that they're, they're kind of going, they kind of mesh together as we get into the real world and the different type of projects that we're working. So sometimes you see a digital design student working with the health science student, depending on the different projects that they have. Yeah, go ahead. So we have 63 students that started the program. I think we, a couple have left because of different conflicts in their schedule. So I think we're down to 61. There's 25 from Provo High, and there's, what, that's 36 from Timpew. So a pretty good mix for this first year. Developing a new program and having to market and go into the classroom and try to explain what we're trying to do, I was very happy with the number that we have. And so this is for the first semester, and we have pretty close for that for the next semester. The demographics, I was very surprised to see that pretty much mirrors what we have in the district. There's about 38% of them are minority students that are in the program. And I think that's, a lot of it has to do with us providing access and transportation for them. There are two-thirds boys versus a third of the girls, and that surprised me a little bit. That's some work that we have to do. But if we look at our internship numbers for the district, it's kind of the opposite. And so we're finding that a lot more of the girls are taking internships. But this shows we have a lot of work to do in our engineering side and the non-traditional side. And so it's showed us that we've got to keep going. There's 25 projects that we're doing across the valley with different business partners. And 14 different business partners are working with us. So that means there's more business partners are giving two to three different projects, which is kind of fun. Yeah, go ahead. So here's some examples of some of the projects we're doing. And I'm not going to, this doesn't highlight all of them, but this is some of them. So some of the students, one of my favorite projects they're working on right now, they call it the Iron Man Project. And they're working on developing, there's this mass that's already been developed, and they're trying to make it more virtual, or they're trying to put a camera in it. And so the kids have dubbed it the Iron Man Project. And yesterday, they were creating a, on the 3D printer, they're creating some attachments that they would hook a camera to. It was kind of fun to see the kids work on that. We're working with IHC on a gym equipment, a mobile gym equipment. That there, we have health science students working with engineering students. And it's a mobile gym that you could take to somebody's house, a patient, and they could have those equipment to work on. Go ahead and go to the next one. So health science, you know, the mobile gym again there. The marketing campaign for the wellness program. So our kids went over, and they were filming in IHC for their wellness center. Now they're going to do a campaign to get people more aware of what they do and offer there. The perfect product one is very interesting. These kids are, they're really struggling with this one, because it's kind of a blank canvas they have of creating a product that's self-sustaining. After they're done with it, it's got to be, there's no parts left, so they got to be able to figure that out. They're having a hard time with that one. It's kind of too open-ended for them. Go to the next one really quick. Business and marketing, this is our biggest group by far. And the students are, you know, they're kind of loving what they're doing. And like I said, I think they're going to Fat Cats for one of them. They're doing different marketing. Marketing's our biggest one. We're bringing in different marketers to help our students with this. New Skin has a good marketing department that's helping us. They tap to play one. They're finding out how to use their phone to be able to use an arcade. And the kids are having to develop that, so it's kind of stretching them there a little bit. Go ahead to the last one here. We're working with the Provo City on a safe walking route for schools. Also, Alex Judd met with them as well, from here in the school district. We're working on a, they're looking to design and implement different webpages and seeing how user-friendly they are. They're doing training videos for a construction company, so it's showing kids that, you know, a construction company is not the traditional thing you think of. There's lots of different jobs there. The girl that's working on that's doing a great job. So go ahead and go to the next one. So, like I mentioned, our partnership with New Skin, it's been fantastic, and they've been very generous to us. You know, it's going to be year to year, whether we can use this. And so we have to think about what future space are we going to have? And we need to plan for that and make sure that we can sustain this and make this a lasting program. We need to plan for growth, too. Like I mentioned, we had 63 students in there at the beginning. For our first year, I think that was fantastic. So we'll serve about 120 kids. That's not all of our kids. This is not a program for everyone, but it is a program for anyone. And so we want to make sure that they have an opportunity for it. So what's our next step in growth? We can handle about 80 to 85 students there a day, you know, do we, but they're attending every other day. So can we go every day? And those are different things that we're going to look at as we're, you know, as we continue to grow. I think the word of mouth and different students sharing their experience that they're having, I think will go a long ways for us to get more students into the program. And then lastly, our continued community involvement is very important. We want to make sure we've already developed these good community relations. We want to keep them going and find even more. There's people that are coming out of, you know, they're saying, hey, I heard about your program, tell me more. And they want to come see it and take a tour of it, and we're showing people on the community our different program. And, you know, just yesterday, I met with BYU and the Chamber of Commerce as well. And, you know, they're going to come take a tour of it and kind of help us out and see how they can provide mentors for us as well. And so lastly, here, I just wanted to share this last thing, Bonnie, is one thing that we want to do is we want to give the kids an experience that they're going to be stretched. And that they're not going to, you know, go back to their own thinking of this is how it's done, and this is how we've done things in Provo School District. I want them to think about what more can we do, and how can we reach out there and get people involved in this? And I think it's been fantastic, and, you know, there's been lots of hands, you know. It's been a lot of work, but, you know, I've had great support from our different committees, you know, from Todd, down to the board, to the principals as well. So a lot of people got involved to make this happen, and it was a, you know, a good process. But I think that the overarching key is that we're going to stretch kids' minds and move them forward. So that, are there any questions that you could answer?
Can you tell everyone what the big differences between something like this and just a regular internship?
Oh, yeah. So internships have been fantastic. And the biggest difference is in internship, they go for one period, and a lot of times, they get to shadow. And they get to watch what's happening. Sometimes they get to be involved. The biggest difference is this is working on a project, and it's going to be hands-on. It's as if they're working for that company. And so that's the biggest difference right there, is that they're going to produce something at the end. And so we'll have a showcase in January of them presenting the project to the different companies.
I just want to say thank you for all your hard work, you and Jan and everyone else involved. It does sound like a lot of work to bring the businesses and the mentors and everybody on board, but it seems very rewarding. My son's in it. He loves it. It's been a great experience for him.
Good, yeah. Which project is he on?
He's on the.
Is he on the spa?
The spa one.
Yeah, that's a good one, too.
He's excited about it.
Great.
I just want to also thank you for your thinking about the students who may not have transportation, or who traditionally would not access. That was going to be one of my questions, and you answered it earlier.
Yeah, that was a big worry, and it was a worry for a lot of people on the committee, for sure.
Well, I'm glad.
And I think it's working out well. We had some questions about, you know, kids riding a bus and being able to, you know, fill, but it's, lots of different kids are riding the bus, and it's worked out well. And we're also using our CTE vehicles to go out to the businesses as well. So we've gone to about every business partner for them to collaborate with them.
Clay, I doubt that this will be the only presentation you make to the board about this. And that's one you make, probably it would be helpful if you can start to give some thought to how you could report on the effectiveness of this, whether it's data, or soft data, or some other kinds of things. How will you be evaluating this program's effectiveness?
Yeah, and a couple of things I've been, I'm glad you asked, because the real key is, is it going to lead to career opportunities? Is it going to really move the needle that way? And then what effect does it have on the CTE classes, or the classes that kids take, leading up to this? Right now, we didn't offer, we didn't say there is any prerequisites to join this. There may be in the future. And so, does it help our CTE courses to fill up our computer programming, our engineering classes? Does it get them excited to be in it? Are we going to see more women in it? Are we going to see that kind of change? And that's been hard for CTE in general, nationwide, to see that change. Can we make that difference here in Provo? So those are some of the things that I want to look at. And then our, you know, our underrepresented students, how are we getting them involved as well? So those are personally things that I want to look at.
Tell me about your coordination with Clay Preciouson, and what have you talked to him about? Have you had any conversations?
Yes, lots of them with Clay. Last year, we were hoping to get space, and that was a conversation we had about space at the time. And so that didn't work out, because they have the space down here in the old courthouse, right?
They just don't have time to, they don't have funds to renovate it.
Right, and so we talked about that. And so that, and then I had the opportunity to share about what we're doing, what we're trying to do with this program. And so I meet with, you know, Lisa Birch, that works with him as well, every month. And so we have conversations about, articulations about where kids can go after they're done with pathways in Provo School District, and how they can continue on. MTEC, as well as UBU's there as well, when we have those conversations.
Would it be all right, you know, he might be able to move up that construction and funding list? If we have an agreement to say, you know, our health, medical billing, some of the IT courses that they're offering in the old Provo Pilots Building, that there's demand that might move up our funding, I can use that as a strategy? Would you be responsive to that?
Absolutely. Yeah, I've actually, he gave me a tour of their space, and we looked at it. It would, it's a good space, and it would work for this program.
But they're only, right, I mean, right now, they're only on the first two floors, so they have lots to go.
They do.
But they need the funding, but if we have demand, that might help us.
Sure, that's something we'd definitely look into. Yep, so I have had that. As well as we've talked with NORDA and Rocky Mountain about their spaces that they're building on the golf course there. So we've talked about them, not of space, but of how we can have them involved in our program, for sure.
Any further questions? Clay, tell everybody thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate it. That was great. Thanks for the opportunity. Appreciate it.
All right, next, LEA-specific licenses, Jason Cox.
Thank you for the opportunity to visit with you tonight. So each year, USBE asks that the school board review the people who are currently in need of what is called an LEA-specific license. It's a license to teach that we prepare with each of these candidates, because they're not completely finished in either the program that they're currently in, or for whatever reason, they're not quite to full licensure. So we've given you a list tonight of those people, also the policy that goes along with that. What we'll do tonight is ask for your approval in the business meeting, and then we'll be sending the list on up to USBE after that, because it needs to be to them before the 15th of October for the school district to get fully funded for each of those teachers. Everyone who has a license, even an LEA-specific license, generates more funds for the school district than someone who may not have any kind of license when they join us. Some of the things are a little different this year. Last year was the first year we had to do this, because it was a change in the law and the license practices in the state of Utah. This year, one of the pieces that's a little different is that the state is having a little bit of a hard time getting through everybody that they have to review. So you'll see that we have every one of our interns on there from all the local universities, because they haven't been approved yet by the state to have a professional license, a provisional license. And that will come through, but for us to get the funding, we need to make sure we have, they have a license before the deadline. So we're submitting all of them for an LEA-specific license. And then when the state gets to their review, they'll actually change them over to having a provisional license for this year.
And how many is that?
That's about 20 of the group.
Is that the total number, so I have to count? Can I put on my glasses?
I, you know what, honestly, off the top of my head, I'm going to say it's like 40, 48, but I don't remember for sure. I apologize. I want to say it's 48, but with all the numbers I deal with throughout the day, sometimes I have a hard time remembering specifically. So I apologize.
Yeah, and I know you brought these to us last year as well. Is this comparable? I can't remember how many we approved last year compared to this year.
Yeah, this is up a little bit because of that, because of what I just described. We didn't bring that group to you. We did end up needing to bring multiple groups to you last year over time. I think the first group we brought to you was around 29 people. But then we hired more people who weren't quite licensed over the next couple of months. And so they still have to come back to you for approval. So if we do hire anyone from here that isn't quite completely licensed, then we would need to bring them back to you for approval. And within their hire timeframe, they also generate funds for the school district. That's why we would want to offer them an LEA-specific license.
Do we do different support for them, since they don't have the traditional track of getting a license?
And some of them do have the traditional track. Like I mentioned, we have the people in here who are, some of them are student teaching, some of them are doing their internship. The others that are outside of that, a lot of them are in endorsement programs. So they have a current license, but they're not licensed in the area that they're teaching. So they're completing an endorsement. And then the remaining group of people are people who are in our Apple program. So that's a program that we run where we help them connect with a local university and complete the classes that they need to, to become licensed. So they have a bachelor's degree, let's say they have a bachelor's degree in a science field. They'd like to come and teach science for us. They can go on this LEA-specific license, join our Apple program. We work with UBU to have them assign the license, the classes that they need to take to become fully licensed. And they complete that over a three-year period. So they work to become licensed. It doesn't always take them three years, but they have up to three years to complete it. Great question.
Any other further questions?
Jason, are the student teachers and interns designated a certain way on this list?
I don't think we gave that to you on the list. We tried to keep the list as innocuous as possible, just because it's public. So we have a separate list that contains grade level, which school, what assignment they're fulfilling this year. And again, I don't, we kind of cleaned this up a little bit. So I don't remember exactly all of what we left on the list for you, but it seemed like it was pretty minimal.
Any further questions? All right, thank you, Jason. All right, next, Provo High School travel fee. Time over to Derek Anderson.
We've got, from you, is the second approval for the cheer camp fee. There's been no additional comments on it. It hasn't come in since that's been first approved and advertised. The other one is a new fee, is a performing arts trip to New York City. They've asked to be able to add a fee that which would encompass. Ah, there we go. Yes.
Is this the one we approved, the travel request we approved before?
That was the cheer camp, so this one isn't.
No, I mean the actual travel request of the combined trip with all the different, okay. Performing arts groups.
So, like, what are all the different? So like what are all the different groups that are that this will encompass?
Ballroom, band, choir, dance company, orchestra, theater.
Nine good kids?
No. It's a it's approximately 20 kids per program, plus or minus, depending on the program.
And sorry, just for clarification, are we changing the amount of the fee or are we just adding this in?
This is a new one.
That's not was not there before.
Yeah, if I may, we previously approved for two of the programs. The three additional programs did not have that fee. And so now they're coming forward to ask for that fee to be added.
Is this combined tour fee going to have to be approved twice as well? Any further questions on that or two?
Okay, well, I, on the cheer, is that is that their fees for the whole year or is that for associate cheer camp?
So it's the it's the fee that there's a wording on there for varsity travel for competition. They're adding JV on to that as well. They weren't able to to charge JV girls to go because that fee was not on there. So we added just the verbiage, the fee hasn't changed, just the amount of kids that can go had. It was only varsity girls that could be charged that fee, but they wanted to take the JV girls as well.
Okay, so that total fee is including everything they're doing, not just the traffic.
Yeah, so the increase from the 14 to the 17 is.
Okay. Making sure there's not one cheer camp that's costing.
Okay, any other further questions on that? Okay. Next, large purchase request, Derek.
So what you have before you is that technology's gone out and gotten close for some new card readers or the readers that are for the badges that are be updating. They updated about half the schools last year. This is to finish off that update to some of the other schools.
How long do those usually last? How long does the chat here?
I don't know the answer to that. They last a long time, but this is to replace older technology that wasn't as secure.
And this is already in the technology budget, we're just looking at this over 50,000, right?
Correct.
So will the incorporate the Raptor system or completely stop?
If there's just our badges to get into doors.
Into the buildings.
What it will do eventually is we'll replace the cards that we currently have with a new type of card because the current cards are not as safe as the ones that we'd like to go to. So that's why they're doing the upgrade. And so they'll upgrade all the machines first, then we'll upgrade the cards when we get to that point. They'll read the current cards that we have, but we'll go to a little different card to be more secure.
Any other further questions on that? All right. Derek Anderson again, our fiscal year 2021 financial audit.
This is nothing's changed from our October first meeting. This is just formally approving and accepting the optimism of the audit.
The one that was presented to us after retreat.
Right.
Which is a matter of acceptance.
Yep. See, if my first day fell to board, please accept the results of the audit, so that's.
I I know we changed the name of retreat to.
I've already tried, Derek. No one cares.
Because there was no spa involved.
I really wish there was, but no. We can work on that, but Terry, we've all tried.
You're missing more to pick up on this.
Yes, very misleading, the first retreat, so. Okay, any other questions about the audit? And good job to your team. Thank you, Devin. Very well done. COVID update, Doug Pinter, Assistant Superintendent of Student Services.
Thank you, it's good to be with you again. I know Jason Garrison also wanted to be here, but he's taking a little leave time right now, so I'll be filling in and hopefully able to represent some of the things we've been working on. We did visit at the retreat about COVID at the time, I will put air quotes there, about some of the things that are going on, some of our concerns. And so we also previewed that we saw coming down the pipeline a need to consider a test to stay protocol, which is called out for in state statute. We did run into numbers that began to be at that that threshold of having 30 cases at that school a week ago. So we began to execute that that game plan that you had seen in place for how we would make that happen. And we found a lot of great cooperative friends in the state health department as well as our county health department, neighboring school districts. We had nurses and directors from frankly, from most of the WASAT front coming down to to observe and to participate. We ran a very efficient day, to say the least. In fact, it's been called by many in in feedback that I've received from from supervisors at those different organizations that it was a model. They hope to be able to to share some of the the best practices with other school districts. I do have a summary that our our lead nurse, Heather Chatwin, provided for me that gives you a snapshot of what the the need was at that school in particular. And she has these numbers as of yesterday afternoon that you've heard different types of metrics that we use of of numbers of cases in the 14-day window, et cetera, et cetera. So I'll just share some of these numbers with you so you can get an idea of what the impact was for our response to the the situation with the high cases at Edgemont. As of yesterday afternoon, the number of cases in that 14, last 14 days was 82 individuals with COVID. Now that is 69 student cases and 13 staff cases. Total classrooms that had three or more cases in them were 10 of the classrooms at that school. Just as a contrast of what we've experienced this year at Edgemont Elementary compared to all of last year, during the 2020-2021 school year, there were 52 cases of confirmed COVID at Edgemont Elementary School. So far this year, we're at 106, just two months into the school year. So that's just interesting data to to consider as to what was the the nature of the of the level of of spread or or infectious infection that had taken place in that community. We had done prior to our test to stay event, a community event in their parking lot of the first part of that week. And and there was a number of people who came and participated. It was very well utilized. We found that there were, I think, maybe over, I want to say 40 cases with all the people that they were able to test that night. And they found that three of our students were were found positive even prior to our test to stay.
Doug, if I can interrupt you just a second.
Go ahead.
So we with that community event and with other data that was coming in, we were hovering right around 30 students. And with the test to stay event that happened on Friday, that number more than doubled. So it, 30 is the magic number. That's when we start to set things up with both the local health department and they bring in the mobile testing team from the state. And so that's why we proceeded. We were at that threshold and it was time to do this.
Thank you, yeah. And so that, as Keith has mentioned, 30 is that threshold and we were hovering around that 30 number. There might some that had concern that that our dashboard was showing 28, 29, but yet there's also a state health, well, the health department runs a dashboard themselves and they were showing 30 early in the week. And so that's regularly available to the public and the media. The media began announcing that us and two other schools last year had reached that threshold. So we, again, whether we thought we were one person on or one person off, as we met with the the health department and our and as we executed the the plan, we identified that it was in our our best interest to not just be contesting whether we were one above or one below 30, but that we identified we should execute this plan. It's like they say about when you when you notice a certain rodent or bug in your home and you think that's the only one you've got in your home, you know that you've got maybe concern to do some deep cleaning. And so it definitely met that tolerance of a of a need to do the work. And as we can say, we certainly were able to find, and this is what, again, the health department in particular, those that work in the medical field say this was an extremely important thing to have done for the the community, to help people identify where they stood. I was there for a good chunk of the morning and and I've shared with some of the individuals on our on our safety, health COVID safety meeting, parents were finding that their kids completely asymptomatic were were testing positive. We had even some of our staff who were there and said, I'll just take a COVID test to find that they were asymptomatic and positive. The idea of of that this virus is able to spread with individuals who are showing little to no sign of illness was, I think, probably a wake-up call for a number of people. When we did a blanket assessment of of where the the virus was, it was overwhelming in its response. One of the walkaways, I think, takeaways that we will consider, and we've talked about it in our COVID meeting, is that when we see schools beginning to to reach higher numbers of of reported COVID positivity in their neighborhood, that maybe when we even reach that 50% of that test to stay mark, one of our things I think we'll begin to initiate right away are some of these things like inviting in the community testing to come right to their neighborhood like we did in the Edgemont parking lot. Just some things that we can do to begin to build awareness in the neighborhood. This is just an indication of what's going on in a in a neighborhood. The school, I don't, again, I want to indict the school as being the place where the problem was. It's that what comes out of the neighborhood comes through the school each day. That was indication of a lot of illness in that neighborhood. So we want to be supportive and upfront in helping the neighborhood be aware and make good decisions about their about their health. So making more resources available, maybe a little bit even more promptly when we see that there's a trend of growing infection in a neighborhood will be one of the takeaways we have from this experience. So I'll pause there and let you ask any questions or or those that maybe have some additional information to share.
Just a quick question about the extra community testing that we did. We did one on Monday and then we also did an extra one after school on Friday. What was the percentage of, like, how many people came to utilize those?
I I know that, again, the the number on Monday rang somewhere in my mind, I think, as being well over 150 individuals who came on Monday afternoon. I don't know if I got, Caleb, did you see any number for the the community event? They ran from 2:00 to 4:00 in the afternoon and that's where they had families, for instance. The the general public couldn't come during the day, right? And and again, I saw this in the eyes of the parents coming to pick up their children. Oh, wow, our kids are all positive. We had no idea we should get a test. When's the most convenient, accessible way for us to get a test? Come back this afternoon at 2:00, right? And even then, they were able to offer a variety of tests, including the PCR test. It's a more assured indication of positivity, right? So that 2:00 to 4:00, from what I can understand, was extremely utilized. It was also utilized by a number of our professionals, our staff, who who are more concerned about taking care of the kids all day. Like I said, one of our custodial staff was one of the last people to test just because he, ah, you know, and then he's getting so much time off of work right now, bless his heart, as he identified that he also was positive in his test. So again, I I don't want to to divulge too much specific details. I know we're in an open, public meeting about that. But needless to say, I I do want to say that our our district was commended for its work. It's not easy work to do, but it was done and executed very professionally and in an exemplary way. We feel like it helped respond to a need that the community had. It now resets, even though we have these high numbers on our 14-day window of positivity, the part of the protocol now is that the school now goes to zero. And I think Caleb has noted that on our dashboard with our school. He's actually received some phone calls about, hey, I thought you had all these positive cases. So if he hasn't yet, he'll include on there an explanation that 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 Edgemont school is now reset to zero, not because there's zero cases, but by the protocol that's set up. That's how they reset their their threshold for now moving forward. So just aware as well, the school, because of this impact, has gone into a remote learning for this week. The 10-day window for those that tested positive quite conveniently works out to expire about the time that we come back from fall break. So any individual who tested positive that is not showing symptoms, any individual who did not test and opted to stay home, that window of when they should be away from the building actually expires sometime around October 20th, the time we come back from spring break. So the school is working diligently. We appreciate the technology department who's helped us and get Chromebooks out to families. Teams have been rallying around to support getting online learning material for kids to to benefit from for these three days before fall break. But like I said, I think that all of this hopefully will will come about as being a resolution after fall break. I will note, though, that again, it seems like it's maybe just all about numbers. There are some individuals that have had to seek some some targeted and and specific medical treatment that we've learned about either families or employees even coming off of this event last week. So this is still, again, understandably, a very serious thing and some people are having to deal with some some very difficult symptoms associated with their illness right now. And I don't want to have that lost in any of the numbers. Other questions or comments, Gina?
Gina, no, no.
There was some, I happen to be on social media, which I tend to avoid a lot lately. But I saw that there was some concern about the fact that they didn't know the specific number. Can we address that just really quickly? Like, when it gets so high, they wanted to know the exact number. I know there's some privacy concerns. Have we updated that? I I came in the end of a meeting and I wasn't sure if Keith had already.
I thought maybe Caleb should explain especially why we had zero on there for a period of time.
It wasn't a zero, it's the top, it's a number of people who tested positive. There's a lot of people in the community that are asking, why can't we know the exact number of why it happened?
What did we end up with before?
Well, we haven't dealt with it before and this is our first time. Generally speaking, as of last year, in consultation with the board, we we posted ranges as opposed to specific numbers. And that's really how we've done business this year as well. This was the first time that we've dealt with a number as large as this. And we wanted there to to be a little less panic, at least over the weekend. But as of yesterday, I shared the exact numbers with the board, as you remember. And as of today and yesterday, I think we've we've been speaking a little bit more openly about it. Numbers on the dashboard, however, I do want to cover that because that came up in BTM meeting. Caleb, would you explain that?
So the purpose of the dashboard is we record the numbers that the state and the county health department use to make these determinations. So one, it's only students, it doesn't take the staff and employee talent into consideration. And then like Doug explained, we have those guidelines, stipulations, whatever, that, for example, it's dropped down to zero now as far as the state's concerned. That's the the number of that school as of Saturday morning. And so on the dashboard, all along, the numbers that I have placed there represent what the state is looking at and the county health department's looking at. And so with with the confusion about total numbers with staff, students, the rules that that we're following as far as what drops off when, they kind of make it difficult to always have an exact number. And and then a lot of times that leaves the questions too, if it's not aligning perfectly with what the state dashboard might be might be showing or things like that. So the range that came out of conversations with the county health department last year to kind of keep people in the know about generally where we are, but not have all the the little inconsistencies called out as being untruthful or anything like that. We're not trying to hide anything, but the process that the state nurses are following is a little bit different than what our local nurses are following as far as reporting guidelines and what they have to do to verify cases and things like that. And so just to simplify it and not have to have all these different explanations on the website, we're happy to be dealing with all these phone calls and emails. Kind of clarify that every time we stick with what the student counts are, the general ranges that make impact decision-making, and then we can address things individually as they come up.
Just to add to that, on Friday, around 2:00, the number was, there was one number. Yesterday morning, there was a number, you just heard Doug say a different number. This is one of the reasons why it was my decision where we would simply post a range of plus 30 because we had exceeded the threshold. And honestly, I'm tired of the abuse of emails that I get saying we're lying to people. We are not lying to people. We're posting the information we have at the time. And the challenge is, of course, that that changes. It can sometimes change every five minutes. And so like I said, there were there were 62 on Friday afternoon about 2:00. Yesterday morning, I got it directly from the nurse up there that there were 64, I'm talking students now. And then Doug just. And then Doug just reported on 69. Am I telling a lie? No, we're we're dealing with a very dynamic and ever-changing number, which is a real challenge.
And they try and identify time in the day. I think 8:00 AM is when they've tried to call what our call is for the day. But other agencies, whether it be the state, or this number I shared with you was like 2:00 in the afternoon, when Keith had a number at 8:00 AM from the nurses. So like I say, it really is one of those things that there's no one spot to just peg it down to the very case number. It's it's meant to be, hopefully, some some feel for how things are are going, right? Give or take a tolerance, right? I would be curious, really, Gina, as I'm thinking here with you, if our dashboard's at zero, I wonder what this state dashboard that's accessible to anyone at any time, if it shows that that number that we were just talking about, or if it also reset to zero, so.
Last night, we were looking at it last night, and it showed full, it showed the whole amount.
Yeah. So, again, the idea that that there's nothing that's meant to be secretive or deceptive or so forth. There's multiple people managing these dashboards. We're trying to go with the guidance that our our health professionals have asked us to do and how we manage ours.
So the state dashboard does give us, like, I'm just trying to, like, if parents want to know, then let's give it to them.
Yeah, go to that state dashboard.
We can give it to the state dashboard, and that would give them a number that is not plus 30. Okay, that's great.
Yeah, that's, maybe they could find that. And they they, again, they're working off of a huge database, and they're trying to mine from that anyone that's tagged to a certain school, and they they disseminate that for the whole state. So that'd be a place for people who are really curious and fixated on wanting to know some things, where they can go to find that information if they'd like to. Caleb?
Just to show the discrepancies a little bit, looking at the state dashboard, our now is saying there's 43 total cases and 53 active, which is different than the number that is reported there. So it still gives, it'll give them a number, but just because that's what it says, it's not necessarily any different than the inconsistencies that we're dealing with on our own dashboard.
And I seem to find, remember, watching that state dashboard lot last year or this year, that it seemed to have a lag.
Lagged behind, right? Yeah. Because, again, all the reporting, that's going to verifying, there's just a lot that goes into those efforts of of identifying a case as a case. So, like you say, it it, people have a sensational need to be very exact and to know in the moment anything that's going on, and that's wonderful, but it's it's not very practical sometimes for our entity to provide it in the way that they'd like to receive it. We're definitely going to try our best.
No, I just thought, I thought it would be good to bring up, because if people, if parents are watching, I think this is a good conversation for them to hear, that we're not hiding things that, and there are reasons for it, so.
I'm wondering, Caleb, if if we want to put the state dashboard, have a link on there on our own COVID.
Just as a second reference for them, if that won't confuse them. We certainly, let's talk about this at our upcoming COVID safety meeting as as ways that we can continue to work on the communication factor there. Jennifer?
I just want to say, I do appreciate the update that happened today. On our dashboard, it does say, following the Edgemont test to say that there are over 70 positive cases, because I I don't think parents are as much caring about the exact number, but they do generally want to know. And when they came to look and they saw zero, then that's when it looks like we're hiding something. So I appreciate that explanation, that I think is great that then we're explaining to them why it says zero, where we were at, so we can answer those questions. So thank you for adding that on there.
My last comment would be that, again, from having spent a number of hours there, and my staff did on Friday, just what a a good, I mean, it was a difficult moment from the little five-year-olds going to write on to some staff members who were trepidatious. I mean, it's never, you know, an exciting thing, as much as kids can get excited about anything, right? But I just wanted just to thank the public and thank those who worked as to how cooperative they were. I I was expecting the need to be there to to kind of do a little bit of resolving some concerns and de-escalating individuals. I didn't find a single individual there on Friday that that acted anything but just courteous and appreciative of the work that we'd done. Now, it's not to say some people still contacted and emailed and let their voices be heard, which they're certainly welcome to do, but appreciated the civil-mindedness of our neighborhood at Edgemont while we went through this, this kind of difficult event for them all, and we continue to want to offer our hand of cooperation and partnership with them. So, thank you.
I have a question. Is it Darren not here? Well, I was just curious, we ordered all those extra adapters for the Chromebooks. Did they arrive in time?
Yeah, they did. So the Chromebooks are being passed out yesterday and and through this week with the the adapters that were ordered as being, so they didn't have to dismantle and crawl into all the charging carts to pull out the the wiring. It was it was just in time to make that something that worked out. Anyway, thanks so much for your opportunity.
I have one more question.
Yes.
Has the health department determined why Edgemont had such a huge spike in cases?
The health department hasn't sent out individuals that I am aware of that have made any sort of a determination, probably speculative at best to to guess if there was something that happened there in the region, if there was something related to community health or following or not following guidelines of health and safety. I I don't think that I have anyone that's given me any sort of a scientific answer to that question. Terry?
My kids go there, so if they're doing what they do at home, they're probably looking at money.
It might have something to do with.
Probably a candy crust, too.
I think we'd call that respiratory, some sort of like, I I can't even think of the word, but just just how how thoughtful and careful they are about their respiratory health, right? Etiquette, I think that's the word I've heard. Respiratory etiquette is what I've heard some people say. Who knows? But thank you so much for the minute to talk to you about it.
Thank you, Doug. We're going to have a minute to talk about the impact of the census, and Keith's going to talk, take that, he's going to read a statement from Wayne Parker.
Yeah, I was in touch with Wayne Parker today, and the city knows more about this process generally than we do. Let me, I think this will be self-explanatory. Early December is when the county is likely to start looking at school district board boundary areas. As a quick thumbnail, they expect about 1,000, excuse me, 16,470 people per district based on the recent census numbers, so you can well imagine.
Can you say that number again?
16,470 in that range. That'll probably mean some redrawing of boundaries to get to those numbers. They need to wait on the state to address the state-level boundaries, which will define precincts, which form the basis for local elected district boundaries. They'll also be taking into account, to some extent, where we think growth will happen soon, as that's where the city starts to step in. We, the city, will be working with our mapping experts to set up the YF tools we used 10 years ago, but need to have distinct precinct boundaries before we can really start that process. Hopefully, that helps for an interim report. So that puts a little bit more detail to the discussion that happened last week with the legislators when this topic came up. I did tell Wayne that as we get closer to it down the road, I may ask him to come in and speak to the board about an update on the process and the timeline at that time. But that's the information he shared.
So he's saying 16,470 districts and not the five city council districts?
I believe that's, I believe he's he's done this enough to know that, yes, there are seven districts here.
Yes, we'll just wait till we hear from him, when we get closer to when they start addressing the boundary changes.
I don't know if you had any questions about what happened last week, but hopefully that at least puts a few ideas in your mind as to where this goes past.
Because you think the, because I know it's the redistricting at the state level.
Right.
They have that whole website where people can go in and change the bound, do boundaries themselves. Are they gonna let the citizens do that?
I don't know what the process is. I was not in town last time this happened, just barely missed it. So I don't know. I I was thinking that probably either December or January, we should invite Wayne to come and spend about 15 minutes with the board, just to review this with us, wherever we are in that process. I'm going to forward to you, you know, I received from him that I just read, just so you have some of that information.
Thank you. Okay, consent calendar, review and questions. Is there any questions about the consent calendar?
I have a question. I don't know if this is more of a minute question or a financial question, but when I went back to go look at the September financial reports, I could not access them if I was not a school board member. So if the public was trying to find these reports, they couldn't find them. They're not there. But when I went to go look through them on my board doc account, I could find them.
Aren't, have they not already, they don't get approved until this meeting?
Yeah, I don't.
And so they're not available to the public until they're approved, until we vote, that's all we're voting, and then they should be available.
But shouldn't they be able to look at them today?
Not.
No, but today's financial reports, they should be able to look at today's or financial reports.
Not.
No, they should be able to go back to last month.
They're all under, if you look, if you look at 6E today on our business meeting, you'll notice those reports are under administrative content and executive content, not public content.
Until we vote, and then that's that's the law.
So the law says that that the taxpayers are not allowed to see this information whatsoever?
No, as soon as as soon as we approve them, then, so August is available to the public, and when we approve them, then that's.
August was, yeah, August is available. I did check that.
What she's talking about, and I see it now, I don't know if it didn't save or what, but the financial report file in the public is showing that no attachment is there. But when you log in, let me go back to it. There we go, so there's the financial reports. So here's why. It is because one item is, got tagged as executive content, which was intended, and then the executive content is just for our eyes only. The other item, which this is on me, this is my, is the reports are under the administrative content, whereas if you look at the current agenda, it shows.
They're all under administrative content and not public content.
Yep, bingo. So the it, the public content is where I'm looking to, and we can move that by going and editing, just editing it, and then adjusting where people can see it.
Okay, because the taxpayers should be able to see this.
And there's no, there's no law that says the taxpayers, that we have to make it publicly available. It's the the board of prints it. So we've still followed the law, but it's, if we want that to be something the public just can see every time, then we can put it, just keep this public. And that that was something that I missed, because I think the one prior, it was public. And as you're dropping those attachments in, there's three separate boxes that you can drop them into, and I just probably missed it.
Because no one's been able to see this except us. Not even the public, for this month, see this. And then also on the executive summary. For September. On page six, on the left column.
Yes.
So does this mean that all the grants were used since they're also on the right column?
So here's kind of what happens. So if you look at at the very top of that page, there's revenue and expenditures on the on the right, revenues on the left. So grants, when we get grants and we're doing carryovers and rollovers, that means that revenue has got to be budgeted along with the carryover expenditures, so we're budgeting both, so it stays a balanced budget. It's just, it's an accounting function that makes it to where it it shows a balanced budget, so.
And then on page 11. Is the building reserve blank on purpose?
Yep. The reason is, is because right now, there's no budget that we've approved for anything. We are not planning on adding to the building reserve at this point, and we are not planning on spending anything from the business, the building reserve. The money is still there. This is a revenue and expenditure function, not a balance sheet. The balance sheet will show the 18 million that is there. This is just showing, because, but you don't budget a balance sheet. It's just a snapshot of where the financials are at the time. Your budget resides in your revenues and your expenditure on like an income statement. And since this is an income statement, kind of showing the flow of cash or what would happen, and we've got nothing in there that's been budgeted, that's why there's, so those are all zeros.
Okay. And then on page 14, is this is the new tax increment stuff you were talking about on October 1st, yes?
No, this is not the tax stuff that we were we were talking about. The the tax stuff that we, that I was talking about is adjusting our tax rates to maximize our revenue and adjusting those. The tax increment financing is specifically, this is the RDA. Ours was Fund 26, and that's what I used to, so. So this is RDA. So what that means is when an organization wants to, say, build a business here in Provo City, they can come to the district, they can come to the city, they can come to government entities and say, give me a tax relief, and I will build my business here, or I will stay here. And so the board, the city, and, you know, those government officials approve or can deny that tax relief. And then what happens is just because we're giving that tax relief, they're happy to pay property taxes, we have to report it in this fund, show, so the the public knows how much property taxes we have foregone this year.
So when are you going to start your thing, and when should we start doing that?
Next year. So it'll be not this year at all, it'll be all the way to next year.
So not till March? Okay, and then on the next page, on page 15, it looks like two projects are over
Playground equipment and.
And at the bottom.
Portable.
Yeah. Is there any others that haven't finished that you think might be going over budget?
So oftentimes, what will happen is, is we, they, these budgets will land on specific projects, but then as, say, a project that we see that, you know, isn't going to be able to be completed, like, say.
So I'm sure some of these are leftovers and want to.
Say, say, let's go down here, like, additional playground equipment, at 85,000, it's like halfway down the page. Well, then you look up here, and it says playground equipment. It could be just a specific coding issue, but, yeah, that one, we do have 85,000 budgeted there and 19,000 budgeted there, but the expenditures have all landed there in that form for playground equipment. So it could be a coding error, which is why that was showing, hey, that's higher than that budget. It could be that, hey, that cost came in more, and so we're going to use some of the budget from below to cover it. But in terms of, if we're going to go over in more areas, I'd have to turn that over to Mark. I wouldn't expect that. You can, you can be assured that we will not go over that total budget at all.
Only two projects on it? There you go.
And let me know, Terry, if I can help with details, let me know which one you're looking at, I can get back to you.
No, I'm just waiting to see, you know, because of all the construction, I mean, Tim, you just went over what other little tiny thing that needs to be done, like the masonry sealant or something, you know, who knows? That might have to go over budget because prices are crazy right now, you know?
Our masonry sealant projects are going well so far. We put on one of those until next spring because of difficulty getting product, but as far as overall budget, we're still good with that specifically.
Yeah, and you never know. Something might, I'm sorry, we bought a couch from our Sea Willie. They, we called them and said, where's our couch? They told us some crazy story that the boat had sunk in in Pacific Ocean. They told us some crazy story that the boat had sunk in Pacific Ocean. The very next day, our couch shows up. I'm like, okay, so what kind of crazy story are we going to be getting? About masonry sealants in the bottom of the ocean?
Yep, it's in Long Beach, yeah.
Yeah, that's all my questions.
Okay, just as a reminder, Terry, if these are all great questions, if you can get those to Derek Pryor and then ask him again, he can be prepared for the answers for those. That would be helpful. But yeah, thank you. So, all right, consent calendar, we've done, let's see, go back up here. Our upcoming Google item, Google calendar items, we have fall break coming up this week from October 14th to the 18th, and then on the 19th, there's still no school because that's a professional development day. So teachers will be in sessions, but students won't. We have a study session coming up on Tuesday, October 26th, from 7:30 AM to 9:00 AM. And then we have another study session coming up on Tuesday, November 9th. Any questions about those calendar items?
Only that, we talked last week about, in the event that sometime between now and the 26th, actually now and the November business meeting, in the event that we do get an offer of some kind of a loss hatch property, we may have to add a business meeting. It would be one agenda item only for that, so maybe. We don't know, but that could be one day that we could add it, or there may have to be another date.
As we get more.
Probably do an executive session and then the business meeting, but we don't know. It's just kind of a heads up.
Okay, there are a motion to adjourn.
Immediately adjourned.
Okay, okay, a couple of minutes, go use the restroom, whatever you need, and we'll meet back on the other one.